All right, good afternoon. The time is four P M. It is February twelfth, two thousand twenty-five. This is a special meeting of the Argyle I S D Board of Trustees. At this time, we will determine if a quorum is present.
Leona McDade, present.
Josh Western, present.
Rich McGowan, present.
Leanne Arco, present.
Matt Sladen, present.
Kurt Hawsworth, present.
And I Sam Sladen, present. We do have a quorum established. All right, now we'll do our pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On our Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Mr. Hawsworth could lead us in our opening prayer.
Dear Lord, thank you so much for all the time and energy that the people of this community and this district have taken to put this plan together. Please be with us today and guide us in our process and our decisions to do what's in the best interest of students and have that always be what guides us. In your name, we pray, amen.
Amen. All right. This time, I will move into public forum. We have four individuals signed up to speak today. And here is my little paragraph. All right, we're now moving into public forum of today's special meeting. Please note that board policy requires speakers to sign up in person before the meeting is called to order. During this portion of the meeting, board members will listen to comments, but as the designated spokesperson, only the president may respond to the speaker. If needed, and refer concerns to the appropriate administrator, speakers can comment on agenda items, but trustees will not be able to discuss the items until they are before the board during the meeting. During special meetings such as today, speakers can only comment on agenda items. Board policy B E D local provides the presiding officer the ability to adjust the time allotted per speaker for effective meeting management. Pursuant to that policy, an individual's comments to the board at tonight's meeting shall not exceed five minutes. The presiding officer may reduce the allotted time for each individual to speak to no less than one minute for effective meeting management. Speakers are not allowed to receive time from other individuals tonight or this afternoon. Each speaker will receive five minutes. Specific complaints about individuals, district personnel are to be processed through the district's grievance policies as set out in district policies, D B A, F N G, and/or G F. Speakers are not permitted to refer to individual students or employees by name during the public comment period. Additionally, if you have a pending grievance that may come before the board in a level-three hearing, please refrain from addressing the topic of your grievance, except through the grievance process per board policy B E D and this board's operating procedures. The board will not allow disruption of the board meeting by members of the public. If after one warning from the presiding officer, any person continues to disrupt the meeting by words or actions, the person will be removed from the meeting. All right, here we go. All right, tonight, our first speaker, Ms. Spiegelberg. Good afternoon.
Hi.
The time is yours.
Perfect. Good afternoon. So I'm here mostly to speak about the zoning. As you know, I am in that northern part of Harvest that was rezoned last year, and I came before you guys to discuss how zoning was going to disrupt that neighborhood, and we are looking at rezoning again. So this time, I am hoping that for people that live in that area above Old Justin and east of Cleveland Gibbs, that you consider allowing them to grandfather. You give them a short period of time to confirm, but that you allow them to grandfather to reduce the amount of disruptions that we have. Right now, we are trying to build up our P T A. That requires people to have been on a board before if you want to be president. Our board president would be someone that would be greatly affected by this. I could possibly be affected by this as well. I think it's just very important to keep the children and the families in mind and to give them more of a choice. So I would really appreciate it if you take that in mind, no matter how the lines are drawn. With regards to the reason that I was here last time, I do want to thank you guys. Rick Herron was able to get me those documents within the ten days. I haven't had a chance to fully go through all of them, but I will reach out to you guys individually with any questions that I have. So, thank you.
Thank you. All right, next, Ms. Kryziak.
Hello, good evening.
Good evening.
Good to see everybody. I'm here just, I believe, tonight is the special session when you're going to be looking at and taking on the vote and discussion about calling a bond in May. And I'm here just to support that and hopeful that you do that and that the community rallies together to support it because we most certainly need it. Just a couple of points that I wanted to say. I know that just different folks I've talked to over the past year, but even just somewhat recently, the idea of putting forth a big bond where there is planning put forward for land is so critical. Instead of these sort of one-offs that we've been doing through time, because that's what, if you've lived in the district for a while, as I have, that's what's really gotten us behind the eight ball. We just have not had the land. We haven't had the ability to kind of plan ahead and have a spot, if you will. So just encouraging that and thinking ahead about just different schools that we might need, and you know, that might fluctuate a little bit. That could change a little bit, I guess, to a degree, just depending how quickly things grow. But hopefully, if the economy kind of picks up and continues on, I mean, North Texas seems to have no shortage of folks coming here in the D F W area. So I don't think we're in too big of a situation where we would be hurt by that. But I do believe that, as my understanding is, is even if the bond is passed, that we don't build until like we have the capacity and the homes or the rooftops are there and all of that. So it's not as though we would be, you know, throwing away money, so to speak, that we don't need to use. So if suddenly everything came to a screeching halt, that wouldn't be the case. So I encourage people. I think some people don't understand that maybe in the community, and they're a little worried about it. So I would definitely encourage you guys, and as we communicate that, to talk about that point. One final thing I would like to talk about, excuse me, is, and I've talked about this before, is facility capacity. I've got a fun spreadsheet that I didn't have time to send to you guys before, but I will be sending it in your inboxes, so get excited. Mr. Herron was helpful actually providing me with some information, just kind of looking at all the campuses that we have and here in the district and how they've been used since two thousand twelve, and I've been here since actually before that. So kind of how they were used and how many students were in those buildings. And it's really interesting to look at it that way. And certainly through time as well, we have had our facility capacity, building capacity numbers have changed. You know, Dr. Wright formerly and the team she employed to do that looked at it one way, and then we've looked at it in a new way the last couple of years, which actually raised our numbers. So for example, some might not know, but just to give an example, the Canyon Falls campus, which is the current high school nine through twelve, the current building capacity that we're saying is twenty-one hundred. In the past, we said it was seventeen fifty. So kind of a big leap. As far as who's in that building presently, I can tell you that according to October of two thousand twenty-four, it was sixteen hundred and forty-four kids. So there's been a lot of just, one other thing. So middle school, same example. The building capacity, what we're saying it's at now is thirteen fifty, but in the past, the past administration said it was eleven hundred. That building right now at three seventy-seven has nine hundred and sixty-nine kids, and the high school here Canyon Falls has sixteen forty-four. I will say, because it was interesting to me, my own children, my oldest, was in the three seventy-seven building as a seven-through-twelve campus, which, by the way, we loved. It was great. I was nervous about it at first, but it's actually a great thing for many reasons, I think, for most. But that building at the highest capacity in the fall of two thousand fifteen, before we were able to open the Canyon Falls as a middle school, when it was housing seven-through-twelve, was eleven twenty-six. So I think at one point, some people were thinking it was around thirteen hundred, but we've never had that many kids there. It was eleven twenty-six. So as a person who serves in those buildings a lot and has teachers, thank you, that I know and the administration in those buildings that I work with, and just my students when they've been there, those buildings are crowded. And I know we have some open rooms at the high school, and that's great, classrooms, love it. But that doesn't mean that the common areas are good. And just today, I was hearing about how the high school cafeteria, I mean, it's very hard. It's tough. You can't get all those kids in there. And there's, I mean, we're looking at some ways to try to spread people out, but I don't know about you guys, maybe you haven't had a family of six that's tried to stay in one hotel room? It's not for the weak of mind or heart. So, you know, that's me. So let's not try to crowd everybody in just because they're not widgets, they're people. The teachers have to work there, the students have to go to school there. It's an environmental situation. What is your environment like? Does it feel stressful? It doesn't feel like a mini-college campus, and I'm just busting it across as fast as I can to get there. So I think that matters, and I would just say, let's look ahead, let's go big, let's get the bond passed, and let's look for third middle school and high school. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, the Honorable Richie Deffenbaugh.
One minute this time.
Five minutes, right? I'm watching.
No, no. You're last.
You actually, I had wrote something out and emailed it to myself, and I can't find the email, so I, uh, maybe I'll make it quicker or longer, I don't know.
The time is yours, Mr. Deffenbaugh.
I'm here with empathy for you all. I know what you're going through. And I will start off with kind of what I would suggest, is knowing that you need to get this bond approved for vote by tomorrow or the fourteenth. I would just ask that you do that in a manner of approving up to, the language being up to this amount, up to that amount, which that gives you the opportunity to kind of really drill down and kind of understand the numbers behind the numbers, and whether or not you as a board, the elected officials who are held accountable, agree with, one, not only the specific line items and how they relate up to the strategic direction, but secondarily, the amounts. Now, I think, you know, we're looking at four hundred and twenty million dollars right now, and I saw from the last meeting that the inflation rate was, is five percent compounded monthly.
Six percent, yeah.
Oh, it's six percent compounded monthly? Five percent compounded monthly, which is down from seven and a half.
Down from seven and a half.
But, you know, the eighth wonder of the world is compounded interest, right? And so this is compounded monthly. These are the projections. It's compounded monthly at five percent, and the current inflation rate is three percent as of January, and that's been dropping down as forecast to drop down. So what we're saying is, these numbers might be accurate for today's dollars, but I don't think they're accurate for tomorrow's dollars. And by, by not looking at that assumption clearly, all you're doing is making a big number scarier for people to vote on. Ultimately, we need this to be voted on, right? And so I think if you could look at that and look at just changing that assumption to two and a half percent, more realistic, compounded monthly, which is, nothing operates that way, but compounded monthly. I think then you could probably save fifty million bucks, who knows? But that's a more manageable number. So that, and then also looking at some of the line items, like, we need land. But the number associated right now is pretty grossly exaggerated. Can we look at that number and see? Net-net, look through all of the options as a board, discuss them, see what you're willing to stand behind and support because you have to drive this, and see where those numbers line up. And then that's the, the number, the bond is already going to get voted on, but that, the number might change from four twenty to three sixty. And that is more easily defendable. That's my point. Just trying to, for your benefit, because the sausage is made in that a committee is formed, and they are given numbers and everything else and needs of the district, and the board isn't even part of that. They're not even allowed to go to the meetings. But what is given to them is a sum up of here's what we need, and then they're expected just to agree to it. My point is, at least look at some of the line items, have some accountability. And I would, I would think that the community would appreciate that. That's it. Thank you all for all you do.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Deffenbaugh. All right, and our last public speaker this evening, Mrs. Reed. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing me to speak today. Well, I was not part of the bond committee. I have been following it as closely as I could. And as a longtime member of this district, I've seen firsthand the challenges that come with the rapid growth. Years ago, I even had children in the portables when Hilltop had portable, portable buildings brought in because there were too many kids for that campus, and I can tell you from experience, that is not ideal. It is not an ideal situation. Our children deserve a safe, permanent, well-equipped learning environment at every school. So I like this bond because it strikes the right balance of immediate needs with the long-term planning that we need. We need to stop being reactive and start being proactive in all of this because, as you know, the growth isn't just coming, it's already here. Like Richie said, finding affordable land and that's suitable for schools has been an uphill battle. As you know, land is scarce, and prices are only going to rise. So if we don't secure property now, I think we'll probably end up paying significantly more in the future. So this bond isn't about just meeting the immediate needs, but also about making smart financial decisions that will save our district money in the long run. And let's be clear, I mean, if the bonds aren't needed, they don't have to be spent, like Jane said, right? But if we fail to prepare for the inevitable, then we'll find ourselves without the funding for the land, and we'll have failed our students and our community. So I think waiting is going to cost us both financially and in terms of the student environments. So passing this bond now is a win-win, and to do so, to do otherwise, in my opinion, would be fiscally irresponsible. I spend personally three to four full days a week either in the middle school or the high school. I love it. But I also see that the overcrowding firsthand, and I think, I know you guys do the walkthroughs, but I don't think a lot of people in the community understand just what that feels like to be in there between passing periods and in the common areas during lunch. Today and tomorrow, the kids lost mega lunch, which means they have to, because they didn't keep their areas clean and they got three strikes. Which is surprising because if you're in there, you see that they really hold each other accountable for cleaning up their stuff. It's really sweet to see, but, so that means that now they have a thirty-minute window for lunch, and they are a third of the school. There's an A, B, and C lunch, so a third of the school is in the cafeteria at a time. And that cafeteria has a capacity of about four hundred, from what I understand. That's at capacity. As you know, most areas aren't comfortable at capacity. So if you're trying to put a third of the school in a space that holds a fourth of the school, it's difficult, to say the least. Comfortable, not at all. So you still have an overflow of kids having no place to eat lunch because now you can't go to the classrooms. You can't sit in the hallways because mega lunch is closed. So it really is a difficult situation, and that's where we're at today. The hallways are packed, making transitions difficult, and it takes every second of those five minutes to get from one class to the other. There's bottlenecks in the hallways where the, where the doors go, and you go from a hallway that's wide enough to, to have four or five kids to two kids. And so just like any traffic situation, it backs up, and you've got to wait for those kids and their big backpacks to go through, and it really is not ideal. It does make it stressful for kids to get where they need to be on time, and there is quite a bit of running of those last ten to twenty seconds. Anyway, with the growth we know is coming, these issues will only worsen, so a strong bond should address both the immediate needs and the long-term needs, and I think this bond does exactly that.
One minute.
So I urge you to present this bond to the voters in May. Let's make a responsible choice for our students, our schools, and our community's future. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Reed. Okay, that concludes our public forum portion of tonight's meeting.
Will you vote up the, vote for our bond presentation?
Yeah. So we're gonna go down and move information-only down and go ahead and move on to the bond portion of the meeting. We have two committee members who are on WebEx.
Yes, so we're getting them set up. So just so everyone knows, as Mr. Herron gets us set up, Josh Combs and Randy Feit, who actually presented last on the thirtieth, are here via WebEx. So if anything that the board would like to ask either of them, Mr. Herron will probably have to repeat it into the computer over there, so just kind of bear with us with that. But anyway, yes, they are there for anything. Coach Rogers is also here. He was here during the last presentation. And then I would also like to have anybody that was in the bond committee that actually served. I know there's several of you out there. If you would please stand for just a moment so everybody can recognize those of you here that presented, okay? Very nice. Thank you very much. And for some reason, my clicker is not wanting to work. Yes, while we're working on this, Mr. Sladen wants to ask Rudy. So we do have some consultants. We have our bonded council, which is Rudy. Hi, Rudy, would you mind coming on up to the podium for just a minute? They want to start by asking you a question. We also have architect Marty Sims would be okay here as well, and then we have some of other additional support from, from other areas that are here to can answer some questions, so.
So, thank you for being here. Appreciate it. It's always that time of year when we get to see you, so.
Happy to be here.
I, I had a question. We, we had a comment in public forum recently about asking to change a word on the motion, and it was suggested that the motion be changed from the word "of" to "up to" the amount. Legally, does that work?
So, let me start off by giving a little bit of background. Is, you know, we've been, McCall Parkhurst, we're a hundred and six years old. We do only municipal bonds. And, you know, for years, it was, we did do a lot of bond elections. School districts vote everything. And so we handle a lot of bond elections right now. My partners were handling, have forty-eight bond elections in house for May. And so, and over the years, there, the, what can be on the ballot and the verbiage on each measure, the proposition versus the ballot, they're two different things, right? The proposition, or what here is the measure, that is the legally binding verbiage. The ballot language is supposed to be a summary of what the measure says. It's supposed to be, historically, what Texas courts have said is it has to just be clear enough to let voters understand which of the measures they're voting on. And so, you know, preeminent case, we had a ballot that said, "Maintenance, text." That's all it said. And the court said that was adequate to let the voters know what they were voting on. So, you know, to answer, but these have been, there have been so many battles behind the scenes between lawyers and the Attorney General's office as to how everything is worded on the ballot and in the measure, and it can cause huge problems. With that background, the, you know, measure A says, again, the measure being the binding language, as they always say, is an amount not to exceed, and that is the language we would recommend. Could you move to change it on the measure to "up to"? You know, off the fly, I mean, off the cuff, I don't see why you couldn't change "not to exceed" to "up to." Or if what you're asking is, can we add that to the ballot? Because the ballot doesn't use that language, right? So could we change the Prop A ballot, which right now would say the issuance of, to say the issuance of "not to exceed," or the issuance of "up to"? I don't see why not, and same for Prop B. Again, you know, with, with, with the ballot, the all-capital statements, those are just supposed to be a summary of the measure. Was that the most long-winded answer you've gotten to a simple question?
It's been my experience on this board that attorneys are typically long-winded.
We get, we charge by the hour, that's why I would like to talk a lot, yeah.
So, I wouldn't, I would like to say that I, I understand the, the request to change. I understand why. But I would say in the bonds that we've done in, in the community has passed for the school district in the past, we follow that practice anyway, right? I mean, because we have had bonds that were X amount of dollars. It didn't require us to spend those amount of dollars, and so we had those funds remaining. We didn't. So I understand changing it, but it didn't, we're following that practice anyway.
We don't, we haven't shown a history of spending more than we needed to on any given.
Yeah, see, that's what I was saying. Just like.
So to go back in the, you know, yes, I think all bonds that have been proved were eventually issued. They were issued only when we got to that point, when we had enough growth to justify it. And I think it was the two thousand sixteen or seventeen that was probably the, that one, you know, we issued those over a span of like five years. And I think, if I remember, the very last issue was like five million dollars. It was one very small issue.
So I, I understand the request for the language, and I, and I don't have a problem with it. But I do want to reiterate that that's not, the practice of following, not spending more than we were given, is, and not spending it if we didn't need it, is we've been following that as a rule of thumb anyway.
And, and the legal language does say that the, the binding language is an amount not to exceed. Could you add that little, you know, bit, I don't know what you call that. It's been a long time since, you took that little phrase, "up, not to exceed." Could you add it to the actual ballot share?
I'm, I'm having a hard time distinguishing the difference between "up to" and "not to exceed." And if "not to exceed" has been historically accepted, it sounds like that accomplishes the purpose, and I'd be fine with it. Is that short enough for you?
It's pretty good. See how it goes.
Yeah, we've only just begun.
All right.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Rudy. All right, so as we kind of dig back into the presentation from the thirtieth, I, I wanted to make sure I was very clear on our committee. So the thirty people that came back, and those, some of them are here today, wanted to make sure everyone understood where in the community these families reside. And so we have a breakdown of that, just so you know that it's a very good cross-section of this community. Eleven of our thirty are in the Hilltop Elementary Zone, nine are in the South Zone. And then this, remember, this was the original committee from last year. We did not have J R E. So nine were from the West Zone, but now some of those are West and some are J R E. So still a balanced approach, even with those that chose to come back on these thirty, so I wanted to make sure I went through that with you all. All right, so remember their charge there was to consider the needs of all students in the district. So this is a cross-section of all students pre-K through twelve, and additionally, those that are not yet in school, representing priorities, expectations, and values of the entire community, which again, I think is important as to why we had a good cross-section of members from different areas and neighborhoods in our community. Facts and data, again, they reconvened and looked at the newest demographer report. They reconvened and they looked at, with, you know, we talked about the escalation rates we were using and made some adjustments there. We also looked at just, you know, facilities in general to make sure we had everything from, that we wanted to roll back into that, and then just understanding our district's finances as we develop that. So those, that was their committee charge originally, and that continued to be their committee charge from this board moving into the, the reconvene. And so we met, just as a reminder for those that, or those that did not see the first meeting, we met December fifth, we met January sixteenth, but they had some pre-meeting homework. They studied the, the election results for two thousand twenty-four, and then that demographer report. And then we worked through the processes in those two meetings to get to the recommendation they brought to you January thirtieth. So three areas that they, they developed this proposal into, and that was new construction projects, that was existing facility capital improvements, and then the operations and infrastructure side, and so we'll go through those again. Nothing monetarily has changed. All the amounts are still the same, but we are going to detail things out a little bit differently. All the amounts are still the same, uh, but we are going to detail things out a little bit differently as we're going through this, um, based on some questions that you all have had in the last couple of weeks. So the growth and planning of new construction, that includes elementary number six. That includes middle school number two. That includes middle school number three, planning and designing only. And if you'll remember, the bond twenty-two had middle school two planning and designing in it. This would have planning and designing in, for middle school three in it. The Argyle High School softball-baseball facility over here at the Canyon Falls. And then, um, the committee also, we've talked to the committee over time with elementary five. So elementary five was in the twenty-two bond. And, um, I'll have Ms. Stewart or Mr. Cohen talk a little bit more about this, because I'm sure you'll have some questions. Um, but just as Jane Restman Elementary was, uh, inflation hit that campus, and it cost more than originally the twenty-two bond committee put, put forward, elementary five's in the same position. So here we are, um, with elementary five about to start that process, and there's overage on that, just naturally with inflation. So, um, any questions you have, we can answer those. As far as capital improvements, again, those are the upgrades to the site exterior, interior, MPNE of Hilltop. Um, of course, sixth grade center, we, we use the terminology Eight Hundred Eagle Drive, because it's been several things over time. Uh, but that is the current sixth grade center, and it has some needs over there that, um, weren't necessarily addressed the last bond. The three seventy-seven campus, which is currently the middle school and will be the, are, are the newest high school, uh, in twenty-seven. It will also house middle school two students, uh, starting in twenty-six until the next middle school is on the ground. And then the Canyon Falls campus, I know, um, some of our speakers tonight talked about the, the connector, the hallway connector, the space, the flow. Um, and so that is a capital improvement there. Again, notice there at the top, none of these in, uh, include any student capacity additions at any of these facilities. And that is different from the bond last year. So there is no student capacity additions in these projects. And then the growth, the operations infrastructure piece, so the land acquisition and offsite costs. So that includes up to fifteen acres for a seventh elementary. That includes up to thirty-five acres for an additional middle school, and up to a hundred twenty acres for what would be high school three. So those numbers were, um, really kind of formulated based on what our most recent land purchase was, with a little bit inflation added into that. And then additional transportation parking, as we know that we're outgrowing, um, our space over there with our current fleet and needing more room there. And then you have buses, which will be, um, obviously, as we grow, we need additional buses. And then technology infrastructure, this is not the student device, the student one-to-one devices. That passed on Proposition C back last spring. This is actually the infrastructure portion, um, and Mr. Royer can answer any questions on that that you have. Um, he's well-versed in, in that area. So that total law, uh, long-term bond package is four twenty-three, one seventy. And if you look at actually what the bond committee from last spring recommended, not what actually went on the ballot, but the original recommendation, it's about a hundred and sixty million less than that. Um, it's from a reduction from recommendation to recommendation. So essentially, Prop A would be three hundred ninety-three, seven hundred thirty-five million, and then twenty-nine, four thirty-five on Prop B. And those are the projects and how that would be, uh, that would be split out. So I will open it up now for questions and discussions. And, uh, Ms. Williams is here as well, because I know that there were some questions, I believe, on the current sixth grade center at Eight Hundred Eagle Drive, and she can certainly, uh, weigh in on, she was in the committee. And then, of course, you've got Mr. Combs and Mr. Feith on the, on the call here, and they'll be happy to join in with any questions you have.
So maybe, this isn't a question, but maybe just to make sure we, we have it recorded for the meeting. And either Mrs. Stewart or Matt Bowles or Julie McMillan can talk about this. But can we talk about, just, just to share that if growth doesn't happen and we don't need to call, uh, we don't need to sell bonds, that that's not going to be financial burden that we have to pay back if we don't issue those bonds? I guess if someone could explain that in more eloquent financial terms.
They'll, they'll come up.
We had someone speak to fear around that in the community, so.
Hello, thanks for joining us.
Well, thank you. Good to see you all.
Good to see you.
Good evening. Um, I appreciate your question. I think it was well-worded, and I'll answer it by saying that no, so long as you don't issue the bonds, excuse me, uh, there is no financial obligation. You will have essentially a ten-year shelf life, uh, and that's sort of loose. But the AG views a ten-year shelf life to issue that debt. And if you don't issue that debt, uh, it'll essentially lose its shelf life and you'll just move on.
Rolls off like it was never there.
That's it.
Okay.
Just to read, because I mean, I get this question. So what you, another way to say that is to say by, if the voters were to approve a bond, doesn't mean the district's going to incur four hundred and twenty-three million dollars in debt obligations. And they're going to be taxed, even though their taxes are sad, but at fifty cents. But that, that's what you're saying. We're not, we're not incurring the debt four hundred twenty-three million dollars.
You'll authorize the issuance of four hundred million dollars in debt. You'll install it as growth comes in, in increments to be determined. Once those installments are made, you'll become bound to make a pledge to make the debt service payments and be taxed on just the portions that have been issued.
And you, and you issue bonds, historically, the district has issued bonds, and you advise the district to issue bonds when there's an opportunity and a need.
Correct.
When those two things meet, is when we sit here and you say, "It's a good time to sell the bond."
Correct. And by that, opportunity would represent taxable assessed valuation growth and more kids to put in your schools. And that would be the opportunity.
Or a piece of land that we can buy.
Correct.
Okay.
And conversely, I also want to point this out. If for some reason, growth came to a screeching halt, we didn't get another student in the district, there was no more growth, no more building of homes, then we wouldn't be getting the additional capacity, correct?
Correct.
Of these additional bonds. So even if, even if this passed and we, and the voters approved it, if the growth stopped, we wouldn't be able to go out and sell these bonds.
That's correct.
Okay. So the continued growth gives us the capacity
Right.
to help cre- build the buildings and capital improvements for the students.
Yeah, the issuance of the debt is predicated upon the growth to repay the debt. If you don't have the growth, you can't make the debt service payments, so you wouldn't issue the debt. Thank you for clarifying that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry you had to stand up, Julie.
You may be back. It's okay.
Okay, again, we have Mr. Combs and Mr. Feith on WebEx, and we have committee members here in the audience if there are any questions on any of the materials that we've reviewed over the past couple of weeks.
And we can call committee members to the mic if, if you want to do that, if there's anything you want to ask.
So I, I've got a question about the Canyon Falls connector. And I don't know who the best representative is for that. Um, but I'd like a little more information on kind of the decision of what this connector looks like, um, what other options were considered, and, and why we came to this decision.
Okay.
Mr. Combs here.
Yeah, uh, Mr. Sims can talk about it. Let's let Marty talk a bit about what it looks like, and then we'll let the, then talk from the committee standpoint. How's that sound? Does that work? Okay. So, Mr. Sims, if you'll just kind of share a little bit about the way it's, what it would look like right now, with that, what that gets us, and the way it's, and then we can let them talk a little bit.
Okay, fantastic. Um, so what we've currently got priced is simply a hallway with, uh, you know, the required support spaces, electrical, riser room for spring, fire sprinkler, those type of things. A two-story conditioned space of an aesthetic that matches the existing facility, and that's it. And so you're essentially connecting the two, uh, the two wings at the exterior doors, if you want kind of a frame of reference between the two, which pushes it out there, uh, towards the edge. Um, and, uh, and, and then there, there is a little bit of square footage in there in case there was an office, say, that needed to be included for supervision, right? So, uh, it may be that you would find it desirable to put an administrator over there from a supervisory standpoint, because otherwise, it's a, it's a pretty long hallway. Um, you know, that.
But not big enough to be a classroom.
Absolutely not. So, no, no, and no future infrastructure, no capacity, nothing else, that is simply that.
So, oh, so, go ahead, sorry.
No, I was just going to say, okay, no future capacity, which I'm great with. Um, but on the off chance that it ever wanted to be used for capacity, I'm not advocating that. I'm just asking the question. Is the infrastructure there to be able to do that? Or would there be more, I think, like peers or other things that would have to happen in order to accommodate that?
With the caveat that it's not been fully designed at this point, right? So it's been, so it's been planned, but certainly you could attach classrooms to an existing hallway, right? So if you can imagine a single-loaded corridor, very simple to put classrooms on the outside, should you, should you need it, need to do that down the road. Uh, a little more difficult on the interior side, just from an access standpoint, but not by any stretch impossible.
And I'm actually not even thinking classrooms, I'm thinking more of a wing of offices. You know, where we could put a department there, or, you know, rather than having to buy land to build a separate building for something that, you know, we might be able to utilize that for another purpose other than having students in there.
Sure, there's, you, you've got lots of, of opportunity for, for, you know, if you were looking at a separate function.
Right.
You know, it, it might not make sense to tie it directly to where it's mixing with the students, say. But, um, but, but you could do a separate building and, and a small, you know, on the site. Uh, there's still room for that, certainly, if that was something you wanted to look at. But if you, if you wanted it off of that hallway, it, it's possible, if that's what you're asking. I don't know that I would necessarily recommend it, but it's certainly possible.
Could be a lot of different options, but obviously not for the students. But, so is, it, it is possible to change up what's, what you're putting down or what you would be putting down now based on this bond to, to make that better, bigger, whatever, to accommodate maybe some, you wouldn't have.
It's a hallway, and so anything that, that would use a hallway could, could use this hallway, presumably. If that makes sense, I may be oversimplifying it.
No, 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 that's right. I got it.
Can, can you remind us the square footage?
We, we priced about eleven hundred square feet, and that's, you know, two stories of, we wanted to have it wide enough, because it is so long, that it doesn't, I mean, even, even a luxuriously wide hallway by high school standards might feel a little narrow, you know, just because of the length. It's like a bowling alley, or, I mean, it's much, much longer than a bowling alley, obviously. So, but yeah, it's about eleven hundred feet on two, and that's a, that's, would be half of that on the first floor, half of that on the second floor.
Okay.
And so we anticipate one footprint, two stories with rooftop units on top to condition it.
And Marty, you've wa- you're familiar with the campus and the layout and how it's constructed, correct?
Yes, sir.
And is it your, as an architect?
Yes, sir.
I mean, is it your recommendation to the district that adding that connector will, um, improve the efficiency of that building? And those hallways that we've heard about today, and I've heard about over years, about just the pinch points and the congestion?
Yes, sir. Uh, anything that you can do to divert traffic from that central, the point of the piece of pie, so to speak, is going to, is going to help you. And so, you know, we've talked about, ideally, you would, you would institute a clockwise or a counterclockwise, would, would help even further, but even if it's two-way traffic, it's, as long as we're pulling people away from that pinch point at the center and having them circulate between classroom wings at the, at this new hallway, that's, that accomplishes your goal. Now, you still have all of your core spaces on the other side of the center, and so you're going to have that traffic will remain, but we need to divert as much of the academic traffic to this hallway as possible.
Because we haven't hit capacity, and I, and I, I subscribe to the opinion that it, it's a seventeen fifty capacity. I mean, you may be able to count those seats in the classrooms and figure out how to get to twenty-one hundred, but when you look at the common areas, the cafeterias, the hallway space, and look at what's going on out there today with sixteen hundred kids, it, it feels pretty crowded. So I subscribe to the fact that, you know, it's, it's probably more of a, a better seventeen hundred, seventeen fifty campus than twenty-one hundred. It, it appears to me that if you, as we grow into that capacity of seventeen hundred, I mean, this hallway is going to be pretty, pretty important for that. I mean, it's already not functioning very well at fifteen hundred, sixteen hundred, right?
Absolutely. I, I mean, your problem will, will worsen as more, more kiddos are involved.
And so, and the kids can go back and forth on both levels?
Correct.
Okay.
Marty, I think, well, ago, when I asked you square footage, you said eleven hundred. You meant eleven thousand, correct?
Thank you, I'm sorry. Eleven thousand.
Make sure.
Yes.
It was, I was getting late in the day, but I'm pretty sure that's not right.
It was a very skinny hall.
Yes, yes.
Expensive skinny hall.
But lengthwise, you said how long it was?
Uh, it's, it's somewhere in the neighborhood of two hundred and fifty to two hundred and seventy feet. Um, you know, it, it depends on if you radius it or segment it, and there's, you know, there's some other intricacies around how, how it goes, but that's, that's ballpark.
Will it have windows?
We would expect windows, balanced with security.
Gotcha.
And I understand maybe from reaching out to people that were on the committee that there was discussions about just leaving it open, not building a hallway and let people use it as like a sidewalk or a breezeway to connection. And I, is it, I understand maybe that was not recommended from a safety and security standpoint.
That was, that was one of the concerns with, with that op- with that option, yes.
Maybe Ms., Mr. Combs or other committee member can speak to that.
Will you have them talk through just kind of the discussions at the committee regarding the different options that were discussed?
Mr. Combs, this is Rick. Can you hear me? Can you unmute? Mr. Combs, can you discuss the conversations and the considerations regarding hallway connector piece at Canyon Falls?
Yeah. Can you guys hear me okay?
Yes, perfect.
Okay, very good. Yeah, appreciate you guys, uh, giving me an opportunity to share my experience there. Uh, we talked about it quite a bit at our table. In fact, uh, not just the, uh, this period, but last year as well. Um, I think it was, this, this, the high school was very crowded, uh, even last year. And even more so now. I think, uh, that's very well understood. The options that we considered were, um, do we want to build a, an entire space and spend the money where it's air-conditioned, or should it be out, should it be outside? Should we spend a less, a little less money? Should we go ahead and put some of the potential infrastructure inside, uh, this kind of triangle or circle that we're creating, or not? Uh, should, should we have any classroom space added or not? I mean, we discussed in length all of these things that I hear being discussed tonight. And the consensus, uh, certainly from my table and the conversations I was involved in, and then also from, uh, the, the quote-unquote vote we took, was that the, the place we landed that Marty has described tonight was a, a good option.
Mr. Feith, could you share your considerations and, uh, conversations regarding the hallway connector as well?
Sure, I mean, a lot, pretty much everything's been said at this point, uh, but we were there to look at problems. So what is the, what's the concern, what's the issue? And the issue is, is the crowded hallways. And so how do you solve that? And how do you make sure it's, it's going to meet TA requirements from a safety and, and a security standpoint? So really, the idea of kind of an open sidewalk, it's just, it's not even, it's not even feasible. I mean, this really has to be something that is, is secure. Um, students aren't going to run off, right? They're all in the hallway, and it hopefully alleviates some of that two-way traffic that's, that's currently there now in those existing hallways. So, I mean, I will, it's important to point out that when you're on a committee like this, nothing has been designed at this point. These are all high-level conceptual ideas. And the goal here is to enable the board to make decisions in the future when an architect is engaged on what it actually looks like. So we, we didn't discuss, is it glass, is it brick, is it, you know, what is it, all those types of things. It's, it's the high-level concept of a connector to help alleviate the problem. And our goal is to hopefully, um, have enough of a budget available to where the team is successful, uh, in the future when that time comes to design it. Hopefully that makes sense.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Can, can I speak generally to the committee and, and I, who is in attendance, and maybe either Josh or Randy? I mean, what I see different from last year's bond to this year's bond is essentially, it, it, it appears that the committee made the decision to not spend money on expanding the footprints of the three seventy-seven campus or the Canyon Falls campus, to, to spend money increasing those capacities. And they said, which means if you're not increasing the capacity of either one of those campuses, we have roughly twenty-nine hundred to maybe three thousand seats, right? Today, we have sixteen hundred and fifty high school kids. So we still have some room to grow if those two campuses are functioning as high school. Is that right? I mean, am I, is that, did, I take it the committee looked at that? That we have a, a little room to grow into these two campuses, because we're right now at seventeen hundred. And that's why they decided not to add square footage? I don't know, anybody have a comment? And so, which leads to my next question, it really leads to my point. So what you're saying, in this bond, you're saying, but when I look at our numbers, I'm going, I'm at twenty-nine hundred kids, or over twenty-nine hundred kids projected in twenty thirty. I'm at thirty-two hundred in twenty thirty-one. I'm out of seats. And so, did the committee recognize that and say then, we better have land, and we better have some money here to add more capacity and be in a position to add more high school capacity? And that's why you have high school three land in there, in case that's the option that the district wants to choose. Because what you're lacking in this bond, which the last bond tried to address, is we're lacking about eight hundred to a thousand seats at the high school level. We're gonna need that as a district at some point. And the committee's recommendation is, look, you have room to grow, so let's not add capacity now, but let's position ourselves in the land side of the deal to maybe find a place for those thousand seats or more that may come. Do I understand this correctly?
Yes, but if I may.
You need to come to the microphone.
And I'm not speaking for everyone in any shape or form, I'm not saying that. But a lot of the discussion as well was that at some point, you know, just different, we talked about why many people pushed back last year, and there was some of, frankly, us versus them, two schools, one versus one, and all of that. But the truth is, and also if you look at the whole community from north to south, and people are worried about their property values, it makes sense to have schools within their communities. And there were people even last year that were saying, well, I don't know if I can get on board with one versus two, but if it's three, I can. And I'm worried about, I don't want my kid driving from the north part of the district all the way down to Canyon Falls, if that's where we are at that campus. And it just sort of makes sense, I think, too, that people think, well, when I try to sell my house in X number of years, maybe it's attractive that there's a middle school near me. And also, they're all trying to go to four oh seven to the middle school there, and with that traffic, you know. So I think it was all those things about capacity, and also the question of the capacities. Are, can we really go up to, you know, as high as it says? Well, we can, you know, it's not necessarily comfortable, but, so I think that's where it led that. Not, again, that's just some of the talk that was there, if that helps.
I would agree, that sums up what I heard from the committee conversation as well.
Does anybody else have another opinion on that?
Mr. Herron, would you ask them if they want to share anything on that, I don't know if they heard all of it or not?
Mr. Pike, did you hear that?
Yes, sir, yes. I mean, so not only just the high school, the middle school as well. I mean, you know, like I mentioned in the last meeting, you study the data that is available, really that demographers report. I mean, it projects out ten years, and it is clear that growth is coming, you know. It's going to affect the middle school and the high school. And so as a committee, we had to kind of decide, okay, which one's gonna hit first? And it really, it's gonna hit the middle school side first, which is why we included the design for middle school three in this recommendation. The construction of that middle school falls a little, just right outside of this bond window. But it's a two-year process to, you know, do the programming, design, bidding, and permitting for a construction project. And so if we don't start that process now, and we wait till a future bond, we're gonna be overcapacity at the middle school, and we're gonna be playing catch-up like we've done in the past. And so we really need to be forward-thinking when it comes to that high school site. I mean, if we don't buy the land now, there will not be land available. There's very little available now. And so, we, again, we want to set the board up for success to allow the opportunity, should land come available so that you can jump on it right away, and you have the funding available. Again, it's all about authorization. If all these things come in cheaper, hey, great. I mean, my experience since COVID is things aren't getting cheaper. And actually, inflation, construction inflation in K through twelve was hitting about, you know, half a percent per month, and that has not slowed. And now we're talking about, you know, new tariffs and new impacts on our construction world. So, again, we're just hoping to give the board success in the future by allowing to address some of these things. The only other thing I'll add, a little bit of a personal touch to it, I mean, my family and I moved to the district in twenty seventeen. When we came to the district, there was one elementary school that we had open. Now we have four. And that's just in the last eight years. And, you know, Harvest is a great community, it's been a great addition to the district. At the time that we moved here, Harvest was pretty new, and it was about a third of the size that it is today. So if you look at data online, I think the total build-out of Harvest should be around four thousand homes. Well, Flower Mill Ranch is coming, and, you know, again, according to data online, you know, the first homes, they're planning on starting in twenty twenty-six, next year. And at build-out, they're planning for three thousand single-family homes and five thousand multifamily units. So that's double what Harvest has. So the need for a third middle school and a third high school in this district, it's a part of our future, and it really needs to be part of this bond, this discussion.
Marty, can I ask you a question, please?
Yes, sir.
Per Mr. Westrom's estimations, we're gonna need eight hundred to a thousand more seats for high school. Seeing that there's a hundred and twenty acre, there's an estimate for funds in this bond that would cover a hundred and twenty acres of land for a high school size of eight hundred to a thousand, or eight hundred to twelve hundred in that regard. What is a smaller footprint of land that a high school could function at?
So, as you can imagine, there's a lot of variables that factor into that, mostly around the field sports and what amenities are gonna be provided, you know, into a practice, a full football field, number of practice fields, baseball, softball, et cetera. I've seen high schools on as little as, as less than eighty acres, you know. So I would encourage, and the other pieces are slope and, you know, floodplain, and all of those are the things that make it harder to build on certain portions of your land. So, but I'd look at eighty to a hundred to be safe, you know, and it depends on the actual land you're looking at, of course.
I will say this, in my experience, I was involved in the sale of the Pilot Point. I think they have already, Pilot Point has already bonded for and purchased its third high school site. Don't even have two on the ground, and they bought a hundred and thirty acres. When I was involved with Prosper ISD, representing the landowner, they bought a hundred and fifty acres. And I think it was a little larger than they wanted, but just to give you a little context, sometimes when you're in the market as a school district to go buy the land, and you say, hey, you may have a hundred and something acres there, I just want ninety of it. And they say, no, I'll sell you a hundred and twenty. And so you have to make the decision, am I gonna just walk away from this asset that I really want that's well-located? Because I really don't want to buy a hundred and twenty? Or I don't, but you have to make the decision, I have to buy the one twenty because that's just really what's available? Or I try to condemn it and go into litigation over buying ninety, and then they say, you know what you did? You killed the value on my thirty, you damaged my thirty acres, because I don't want to be next to a school. So you end up paying damages to the thirty acres but never get it.
It's not uncommon.
So you might as well just buy the one twenty.
Right, and you can always develop the lesser desirable to another entity portion, meaning, you know, the frontage on the main road, say, you develop, you don't want the school up there anyway. You put the school back, and then if you can break off that piece later and recoup some of the cost.
And I was, we're speaking to how many pieces of a hundred and twenty acres are there for sale in Argyle ISD? So, versus, versus just wanting a range, that's all I was looking at, so.
Of course.
Thank you. Does anyone else have any other questions for any of our committee members or any of our experts in the audience tonight?
I'll say something again. One of the things I think that, and to speak to what Randy said, and I appreciate that the committee did, is one of the challenges our district has been in since I came on board in twenty twenty-two is we don't have any land, or we didn't have any land. And, you know, it just, and I'm sure there were good reasons why we didn't, you know. I mean, when we were a much smaller school district, you didn't have a whole lot of bonding capacity, but you had to build a lot of buildings, so you couldn't buy up a bunch, spend a bunch of money on land. But we're at a point now, I mean, we bought a hundred acres in the last few years. Fifty of it's already in play, and we got another fifty that's at First Ranch. But the land that we need are not just for schools, we need them for bus facilities, we need them for other things. And I think it's nice, and I appreciate the bond committee recognizing that including money in this bond for that is gonna be a really great opportunity for the district to be in an opportunist, to go out there and buy land when it becomes available. Because somebody came to us right now and said, hey, I got a great site, I want to sell it to you, we can't even put it under contract because we have no money. And so if a bond like this were passed, we would be in a much better position to move on it when the opportunity presents itself, because those opportunities are come and go. So thank you for considering that and including it.
Counselor, do you rest?
Yes, I'm good. We can go to the next one.
I've got a question about the baseball, softball.
Okay.
And again, I don't know who the best representative is to answer this, but there was talk online that, you know, outside of the obvious needs of having a competition facility at this, which, again, historically, the district has done a great job of providing these athletic facilities for use with AYSA and our youth sports programs, because we don't have other parks and facilities available. But the question arose that the ongoing maintenance of this new baseball, softball complex would be too expensive. And it's my interpretation of this new facility that we are taking the current practice fields, baseball and softball practice fields here on the Canyon Falls campus, and converting those into competition fields, turf competition fields. So if we were to do that, is the ongoing maintenance cost, which comes out of our M and O, is that higher with the turf competition field versus what we currently have out there right now, which are grass practice facilities and fields? And so I just want to know, because again, when we talk about INS and M and O, and, you know, it's all the things that will negatively affect us down the road if we're having to spend M and O dollars on things that we don't necessarily need to, whether that's, you know, buying portables or watering grass fields, or whatever the case may be. I just want to make sure that, you know, for the questions that have been asked, is it more expensive to maintain these turf competition fields versus what we already have out there right now?
Jeff, where's Jeff? Jeff, you want to come up to the mic? Coach Rogers, y'all want to talk through kind of just your experiences in maintenance with those?
Sure. So, yeah, I know I've looked at this with Tommy Ledford a little bit, and he put some numbers to this. They spend about two hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars, I believe he said, per year to maintain a baseball and softball field, you know, one of each. And that includes mowing, watering, you know, irrigation repairs, all of those kinds of costs. Whereas with a turf field, there's minimal maintenance with the turf itself, grooming a few times a year. You get baselines, you know, where the repeated running, you know, they wear out, so there's a little bit of maintenance over time that comes with that. But it's certainly nothing that compares with the two hundred thousand or so per year that the mowing would cost. So there's a little bit, you know, more time and payback, a lot more expensive for the turf field, but you get a longer life out of it with less maintenance.
You're not taking those funds out of M and O?
Not taking those funds out of M and O.
Coach Rogers, what is our turf, what's our turf life been? It's about, what, ten to twelve, probably?
Yeah, they sell you on ten, and you hope for eight, right? So, the long story is, is how much use that our youth is using it. Obviously, at our current stadium, you know, it gets lots of wear and tear. It's got somebody on it almost seven days a week. So with that being said, it doesn't require the maintenance at the grass fields. I mean, we got wear and tear. We had an untimely, it's just one of those deals. We tried to put the ryegrass down, and we got a heat wave, and all at once, we don't have ryegrass in January. So it's kind of a crapshoot at times. So grass fields have its challenges, turf is much more consistent, and it does, and the return on the investment for the turf is, you know, the plus. It comes out of the bond side, and certainly not the maintenance and operating side. You know, you get a mower that breaks down, and our district is, you're behind the eight ball. And we're short on staff to begin with anyway, you know, we got them, we got them working as many hours as they can work right now, and it's just something else to overcome. So my opinion from the professional side is turf is by far the best option.
Plus, you can play on it, you know, weather-related, so you don't have to worry about.
Absolutely. I mean, just, let's just go back and, let's go on Monday night, we're playing in a, you know, heavy mist. It's thirty-five degrees, and the girls are playing softball on turf. If that was dirt, right, they'd all be six-five because their cleats would have mud on them, right, by the time the turf's over with. And that's just, that's just bringing a little humor to it is, but the reality is, it's a cleaner, it's a safer, it's a more consistent surface to play on. And if we're gonna provide opportunities for our kids, that's the opportunity we want to provide.
So the current softball and baseball turf was in the two thousand fourteen bond?
Yes.
So it's ten?
No, it was installed, I think it was installed in fourteen.
May have been passed in May and installed the same year, so you're talking ten-plus years right now.
Right, oh, we're at a ten-year capacity, and if you talk to PhilTurf, I think we're the novelty, right? They bring people, look at our field going, we can't believe it's lasting this long, right? But we've done a good job of maintaining it and creating an environment that it doesn't get an excessive amount of wear and tear.
Coach, can we do the same little song and dance I think we did before about how we use our athletic facilities for the benefit of the community? And how you've made them available?
I mean, I mean, it's been profound how much we've had to make available. I mean, we don't have the parks and recreation, and so we look at it, I mean, we're using our facilities right now, baseball, softball. Our freshmen are going over to the three seventy-seven campus with baseball in the morning. I think they're on the field at maybe six-thirty, and then we're busing them over. And then, you know, if we, during football season, we bust over there to use the indoor. So the facilities are getting, you know, barraged during the day. We've broken up all the athletic periods to as many periods in the day as we can use the best use of facilities. And then after school, we have girls athletics fitting in there. And then as soon as we step off those fields, those AYSA teams are stepping onto those fields.
And so you've made, historically, those fields, baseball, softball, batting cages, those types of facilities you've made available for the community to use.
We have, I mean, I'll just be transparent as possible, we don't give full, open use to them, but we've allowed them to use. I like the girls using the girls' facilities and the boys using the boys' facilities. And sometime a youth boys' baseball team might want to get on the girls' field, and I throw Title IX at them, and I'm not allowing that, right? Because there's no stopping point, right? So that's, that just comes, that comes to a point. But we're giving our kids as many opportunities as possible in this community. And I know for a fact is, we've had teams, kids from Liberty and kids from other surrounding communities coming in using our batting cages in the evening just because of the availability of them. And they're there, I mean, they're safe, they're there, they have a good turf floor in them, they have good lighting, right? And so they know they're available, and they'll use them till all hours of the night.
Yeah, I mean, and this is not a reason necessarily, but I have always viewed, prior to me being on the board, I just always viewed Argyle ISD as kind of a Parks and Rec department for the community in some ways. And there are kids, I mean, the Argyle baseball field, youth baseball fields is really AYS.
It's Argyle ISD land.
Yeah.
It is, yes.
And when I walk, when I drive around this campus in the evening, there's a youth team in any grassy, green- there's a youth team in any grassy green area they can find.
You go to all the elementary campuses, they are too.
Yeah, and, and they're, and, and, and so, I, I just see these facilities being used, and I see, I've just seen our athletic facilities serving our community well, and, and, and therefore being an asset and benefit to the district.
Well, I, and I, I'll be just transparent with you, you think we're winning because of me, we're winning because we have a bunch of moms and dads that are able to use our facilities and teach those kids from a very early age, uh, and grow 'em and nurture 'em in these, inside sports and outside sports, right? Grow 'em and nurture 'em through our facilities, uh, and cast a vision for them to be, you know, athletic participants, student athletes, and do everything possible for us, um, using alongside our facilities, right? They're playing in the same gymnasiums, they're playing on the same fields, right, and they're participating in the same stadiums at a very early age. And so, uh, they just grow up and, and it, that's the expectation.
I agree.
They're not going and getting trained elsewhere. Now, there may be some baseball, youth baseball places in the perimeter and other places in Denton County where they may have, you know, private tutoring or lessons or some of those things is, and coming back here. But, let's, don't get it twisted, we have two national championships in baseball, alright, and, and it's because we have good baseball programs and good baseball teams, and, and it's a priority here, and we've given them a, a, a ground to work on.
Thank you. Any questions, Jeff? Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
You have something?
I do have something. So, earlier when Mr. Armstrong was talking about capacities for high school, that's with the assumption that we have middle school too, because we will run out of middle school space before, we don't have secondary space to go out to twenty-thirty. And I have talked with Ms. Williams, and I was hoping she could elaborate a little bit, on the sixth grade center. I think we have current capacity at seven hundred, but I know she's talked about they need different classrooms for different spaces, the way the band, the way you put kids in different instrument classes, how that affects classroom use. So I just wanted you to speak to that, just so the community has a better understanding that this isn't really a paint-by-number, like you're fitting kids in classrooms and you want a little bit of leeway. It's not an exact science, so.
Good evening, yes, um, sixth grade, I think it's maybe even says seven fifty, seven thirty, so. And I think, yes, if we're educating them in the four core areas, or maybe elementary, you can, but when you get to secondary, and I was on the committee, not a voting one, and the third middle school kind of planning came in, because we will need middle school space before we get to the number of high school seats you're talking about, they have to go through middle school first. And while sixth grade, there's so much I love about having them by themselves, I have to also reflect about what we can't do for them at times. And so the band hall's only so big, there's only so many rooms dedicated to band, we have one gym, one weight room that can hold fifty-four kids at a time, that's it. So if we don't find a secondary, a second middle school and a place to put some sixth graders, then we're going to have to limit how many can go into band, or how many can go into pre-athletics, 'cause you're just gonna flat run out of space. And those are very much the starting point of our fine arts and our athletic programs. And, I've been here over twenty-one years, we're good at academics, athletics, and fine arts, but it's because it's been a priority starting at these ages. And, seven fifty won't work for pre-athletics and band. They have to start looking, they've already started, for example, band, I know, looking at like, the district has four quadrants, because they come in and start learning an instrument in sixth grade. They've never done flute, they're gonna do flute. You need, if you're gonna go to two middle schools, we need to have flute players at both middle schools, we can't have them all go to one and not the other. And at some point, if we can't pull some of the sixth graders out of the sixth grade campus and give them another space to start those things, same thing with, um, the weight room, and what they've done with pre-athletics for these kids, and you doing, concentrating on the sports that are then used at AMS currently for seventh and eighth grade, getting those kids ready for what it looks like working in the weight room, and all of that, those, our kids won't have those opportunities. I mean, I've been, my, my family benefited, so. Without pre-athletics, we didn't have it, we've, we've added that, but we had, we put those, are, they still were important. And so, if that's who we are as a traditional district, then that's what these kids that are in elementary deserve. And that's really where I am, like, I would love to keep them, but you bring them together and I just don't know how we do it. I, I don't know how, I've, I've asked everybody, I've tried to talk to them, like, I don't know how I'm gonna put more kids in there. And if you have six hundred and fifty, and you only have six periods a day to run, 'cause somebody has to have a conference period to run athletics, you're back to over a hundred, and you're just kinda doing PE with a hundred-plus kids per period. That's how I see it.
How, how many classroom spaces in your building do you believe you're using for non-core classrooms like band or?
Well, when it was redone, there's the bigger band hall across the way, there's two smaller practice rooms, and within there, there are private lesson places, but, we've given up a classroom for percussion, because we have eighteen in percussion this year, and all of that equipment doesn't fit in the band hall with the other equipment, so they're doing percussion in a regular classroom, no of the aesthetic, uh, for the sound on the walls or anything. And then, I don't know, PE is, and athletics is all in the gym and outside, we've done that, what else?
So at least three classrooms that you're using for, for band inside?
You, well, yeah, they were built, these were built for band, and actually, I'm using two classrooms just to help store their stuff. Like, percussion's in one, and then I believe we have some storage stuff in another one, down that science hallway.
Plus the area that's the band now, that they constructed to do that when they did the renovation-
Yeah, we've, we've already-
Would have been probably two classrooms.
Oh, that would have been two, that probably would have been-
Maybe three?
Three to four. 'Cause the band hall has that extra storage, 'cause that's the old boardroom.
Yes.
So it was really long anyway, so that probably would have been two classrooms there.
So when we're looking at our capacity, I mean, is that number really true now?
I'd have to go around, there's, 'cause I bet that was when they came through, I think it already had the band hall in it, when we did the facilities.
We did.
I think it did, didn't it? Yeah, so they weren't counting that as classroom-
We didn't adjust that one at all.
Yeah, I don't think that was adjusted, I think that is correct based on-
Where you're using it.
But I would need to take that band stuff out of two classrooms that I'm letting them use and to put it, if we were gonna put kids in there.
Right.
Just to house, just to be able to have science classrooms and stuff.
How's your traffic flow in and out of that campus at this capacity?
Like, at passing periods, because we go between the-
No, I'm talking about car traffic, car line, I mean, it always, I always kinda sweated getting in there and never getting out.
We have a lot that ride the-
I'm coming next year, by the way, so.
Okay, we have a lot that ride the bus, so that, um, we get those out of the backside that goes off to Crawford in about eight minutes, and then if somebody picks, picks up out there, then we let the kids go to that back to get in cars. It is better, I think, than maybe previous in that I run it a lot more the way we did at secondary, that we're not calling car numbers, they gotta be watching, I'm just like calling cars, colors and stuff. But we're pretty much done in about ten to twelve minutes on the front side. But we have five hundred and twenty-two, so that's, we're sent, we send seven buses full to the middle school for transfer. Um, so those are pretty full, so that's a lot of kids are riding also.
My, my personal opinion is, 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 I, I think I hear what you're saying, is that you're not sure how that facility serves the district as a sixth grade center, um, in the future, as being just for all sixth graders. You don't, you don't really see that, and I, I think I agree with you.
Not for all, I think feeding, if it has to feed a seven-eight campus, like, you can do it if you have your numbers, even now at five hundred, it's a little bit rough on some of, for band and pre-athletics, that's kind of a good number, for, if you're feeding it for, to go to your seventh and eighth grade programs. But, um, if you were using it, if you're just trying to do classes, not something so specific, yes, there are classrooms with desks that we can seat more kids in, we just can't put them in all the specialized things that start coming in secondary.
But it does, but it does require the sharing of the staff and an extra administrative team and all the, you know, it, it has those, kinda like a ninth grade center, if you will.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, we have a counselor.
The investment we made in that was about around seven million dollars a couple of years ago, that, then, in that facility, I mean, I'm putting you on the spot, but-
Yeah, I would say six or seven.
Six or seven million, and, and, you know, and, 'cause people have asked me, I've reached out and, and asked people, you know, hey, what do you, give me some feedback on this bond, and, and some of the feedback is, is why are we keeping it, why would we invest in this antiquated facility, it's old, and we just spent a bunch of money on it. And so I kinda went back and looked, I mean, we, we did spend seven million dollars, but we have, that seven million dollars has bought us some very critical years. You know, and it was very well spent. And, um, but now you're telling us that, you know, hey, look, it, we now understand the campus better, we understand who's there and what the challenges are, and you think an additional investment in that campus is needed, whether it's a sixth grade facility or any other facility we could envision in the future, you see it as a, a, a good investment?
Yeah, to keep that campus and use it, oh-
Well, just to be able to do the capital improvement upgrades.
Absolutely, the capital improvement, I mean, there's lots of things that you can do with that campus, and, I mean, for part of a sixth grade, like I said, if I'm, if that campus was feeding, I'm just gonna use, if you have like a, I'm gonna pretend that three seventy-seven is a middle school only, and that four oh seven is a middle school. If I'm feeding from sixth grade just the four oh seven, that the two of us make a six, seven, eight campus, and then three seventy-seven is its own, everybody can do what they want, 'cause three seventy-seven has a weight room, they have field house, they have multiple gyms, they can run kids through that. The number then that would be left feeding four oh seven would be probably at five hundred or below, and you can feed, you can get those kids through there. So it still has a purpose for what we put into it, the capital improvements that are on there are great. The, the bathrooms weren't touched in the orig- I shouldn't say the original building, the newest of all the buildings, which is the main building, the one hundred building, it's the nineteen ninety building, it's actually the newest, but they haven't been touched, um, by the gym, there's a concession area, and those bathrooms are from whenever that was built, also nineteen ninety, I looked at those dates again yesterday. Um, so that stuff, the awnings, I think have-
A lot of the exterior was in there.
The exterior, like, it didn't get repainted, that wasn't part of it, so the metal part, I think it has windows on there, the windows are hot and cold, like, they're original nineteen ninety, we all know that, all kinds of insulation has improved, when, windows and in walls since then. So, the painting of that would make it, 'cause that's the one thing, I will say, when I drove up the first time, I was like, oh, I wish that bond would've had enough to just paint it, 'cause it's very much faded red into orange, you know, it's, when you look at the rest of our district, there's those little, and those are in this, capital improvement. It has windows, it has painting, it has the awning, 'cause it's outlived its lifespan, I think is what it says on there.
Addressing the gym, the stage.
The dre- the, the sti- the gym bleachers have no handrails for adults or, um, people who wanna hold on to get up and down bleachers. Um, they don't come in and out very well at all. There's a machine for it, and I've yet to figure out how to use it, just, just fair warning, I, I call maintenance every time. So, there, that, that bleachers are on there, which will help that.
Are there other uses that the district, I mean, that has thought of in terms of if that sixth grade center ever trend, it's transitioned to, it's been everything?
Been the entire-
It's been the entire district, it's been a fourth grade, fifth grade, sixth grade center. Are there other uses that the district could anticipate in the future, should we transition sixth graders into all six, eight campuses?
Yes, so I think some of the things we've talked about, just from a visionary standpoint, would be, obviously, this building is not in any of these bond conversations, but every time the committee has come together, they'll talk about this building's not big enough for what the district needs as far as departments. So I think you can look at potentially having some of your district level departments over there, I think you could look at potentially some non-duplicated programs that both high schools or all three high schools could come to kind of the center of town, I've seen that model. Um, some of the things that you don't wanna put at every campus from an expense standpoint, but you have one location, and kids can use, you know, kids from the district can use those programs. Um, so yes, there are some, definitely some important uses we could use it for if sixth graders ended up being with the seven eights.
And one of the things that I've always thought about is Hilltop is at capacity right now, and, and is gonna, it'll probably be over capacity next year, and, until we get five and six. I mean, could it potentially be overflow, could it go back to a fourth, fifth center, or if, for Hilltop overflow, if you, and, and maybe hold off on the seventh elementary?
Mm-hmm, I thi- I think, yes, I think all of those are options, depending on where our, basically the greatest need would be, what, what is that, where's our greatest need, and if that's elementary or?
The reality is, is we're in, in a district growing at the rate we're growing, and we're not shutting down campuses.
No.
We're, we're, and we're not gonna shut-
And that would be a long time from now, just like the districts that are going through it now, I mean, it's twenty-plus years since they were in our position.
So even though I see the merit in what people say about, should you really be making the investments in that type of facility? That facility's gonna be a part of our district in some form or fashion for the foreseeable future.
Correct, we would not consider abandoning, abandoning that facility.
Are the existing facilities and capital improvements touch every sector of our district?
It, it's Hilltop, the three seventy-seven campus, the eight hundred Eagle Drive, which is currently the sixth grade campus, and the connector over here at Canyon Falls.
Other than the connector, it's all the oldest buildings.
Correct.
Right, so none of the new buildings?
No. And at three seventy-seven, it's gonna be similar, same things, your interior, exterior, some of your things on your site, your MP and G, your, um, or MP and E, sorry, and then replacing, turf replacements, uh, you know, any of those types of things that are end of life.
Can we talk about elementary school five?
We sure can.
Yeah, I see that in the slide, um, and I guess this was discussed by the committee, or, um, and I, we could kinda see it coming. The, the, the twenty-two bond was, was passed and had some assumptions built into it about with escalators and inflation. When that, that, oh, you weren't here.
Wasn't here.
So you were not here, but my understanding is, when I voted on it, it had the typical standard inflation escalators in it for the buildings that were a part of it.
Okay.
And as it turned out, those inflation escalators that were assumed when that bond was built turned out to be inadequate. We, we hit one of the most explosive rapid inflation periods in our lifetime, right? And so, the consequence of that is that, when we started our first project in the twenty-two bond, which was JRE, we were all over budget by eight million dollars, and that ate into, um, some of the money that we would have used for the projects at the back end, like elementary school five. So is that, is that, am I understanding that correctly, and that's what's happening here? Is that we had to front-end some money because of inflation, and now, we're getting to the back end of the twenty-two bond, and we're a little short. Plus, we're still chasing inflation.
That's correct, the, the cost estimate for elementary five and elementary four, um, in today's dollars, is a lot more than what it was projected to be when we originally built the twenty, twenty-two bond with the higher inflation.
So how much money do we project to have today to build elementary school five?
To look at my notes.
Okay. I mean, how much bond money's left to build elementary school five?
Um, we have approximately thirty-nine million, and we, uh, believe we need about fifty-four million.
It's about fifteen million.
That's not just construction, that's everything all in.
And so that's the-
F, F, and E.
Fifteen million dollar deficiency.
That, yes, correct, and that's what is in that, is on here.
And so if we don't get any additional bond money, we're gonna build a, we're gonna build a thirty-nine million dollar?
Yes, and Jeff-
Potentially, um, Jeff's run some numbers, and potentially, we feel like we can build it at a capacity, I'll tell you that.
Like, five fifty, fifty, I think.
Uh, six twenty.
Six twenty.
Is the best, now that is before we, he figured that before we started including information about what potential costs the tariffs might do on steel, so, that still could change a little.
Steel and aluminum.
That's right, we hadn't bought the steel for that building.
Touches almost every trade.
Yeah.
So, uh, yeah, that capacity could change.
And I mean, I, I'm just saying that, so then, if, if we don't get more bond money to finish or to build ES five, it's, it's gonna look a, a little bit different than the standard we've set for our new elementary schools in West, South, and JRE.
We're gonna create a new pinch point.
It is.
Correct, with a new pinch point, correct.
I mean, the, the current plan was that we could kinda take off of the, the end of one of the classroom wings, kind of at the collaboration in the middle, uh, all the way around to the gym, build that, and then that gives us the ability to come back- uh, all the way around to the gym, build that, and then that gives us the ability to come back later and add that piece in and then it does look like the same school. So just doing it in two phases. But with these new tariffs, uh, we don't know how that's going to affect costs and how that would affect that plan that we did have.
And it's a, I mean, it's a, obviously it's a problem, but it's a common problem amongst school districts that passed bonds in twenty-two and even into twenty-three that are now trying to build these projects, very much in the same boat as this position. This is not an argyle unique situation, that anybody did anything wrong. It's just the nature of the way, you know, inflation happened and.
In massive, large construction projects that have big variables on them.
Correct.
I mean, I, I don't, I mean, I want to be o- as transparent about it as we can. I mean, when I look at the fourteen, seventeen, twenty-two bonds, districts pretty much done what it's told the community intended to do. And we can see throughout the community, um, the projects that were completed. As it relates to the tail end of this twenty-two bond, we're, we're running into a little bit of, um, trouble to be able to complete that project. And we can do it, but it's just not going to probably live up to the expectations that have been set.
Correct. And you'll see a lot of, I mean, if you're watching, you know, I know Rudy talked a while ago and there's a lot of bonds going on the May ballot. And as, as districts are calling those bonds, you know, we've been kind of watching those because they'll do press releases or whatever and, and even before this year's bonds, a lot of times fast growth school districts, they don't itemize everything out. They save elementaries three through five or three, two, five of elementary schools. They don't eat, I mean, because they know things are changing in there. Um, and you'll see that, I think Melissa just released theirs and it says three to five elementaries. It doesn't say elementaries three, four and five, three, two, five elementary schools. And so they have some flexibility with that. Um, if you look at Salinas bond package, they just, I mean, passed, they passed a two-point-nine billion dollar bond package and it's got seven elementaries in it. High school number two for six hundred sixteen million.
Eighty million?
Yes, I mean, two-point-nine billion dollars. Now they've got thirty-five thousand, you know, lots in their future, but at the same time, they're going big so that they can have time to plan and, and get these things rolled out the way they need to.
Well, the, the issue with five though, is I mean, we have four elementary schools that are jam-packed.
Already.
You know, and I mean, everybody, and we, we hear about it pretty consistently. I don't, I mean, I guess West has some capacity right now and it's probably going to eat into that capacity next year quite a bit. And when the, with the, if rezoning goes through, we got to get five done. Or people at South, Hilltop, West and J R E are going to be uncomfortable.
Well, we need to get five done with the original capacity.
Correct.
Yes.
Because otherwise it'll give us an extra year, maybe.
Maybe.
But, I mean, you just look at the numbers. Once that goes online, we're, we're clearly over capacity that next year without giving us enough time to get six online.
And if it comes online at less capacity, we're talking about lots of rezoning. Right? You're talking about disrupting kids. That's what we're going to be doing. We're not going to have a choice.
Well, by these projections, elementary six needs to be, project begin date would be January of twenty-seven, which is two years just from right now with the, with an opening in twenty-nine. I mean, it's not far behind five. Five needs to open twenty-seven and six is two years behind it. Which needs to, you know, that's a project begin date of January of twenty-seven based on what we've been facing and how long it's taking projects to make it through the process from start to finish.
But if five is lower capacity, we've got to move six back.
Right.
A year earlier.
Mm-hmm.
So, so when we built J R E, which is number four, how much short were we about eight?
It started at eight, but it came down.
Yeah, I, I think we started right about nine, actually. Um, and I, I don't have an update on, you know, our F F and E expenditures and technology. Uh, I think those things have come in under. So as we work to kind of close that project out, we'll know better. But it, it did come in under the nine million dollar projection. That was just construction. We did save some on construction and I'm sure we probably saved some in the other areas to help reduce that, which will help with, you know, the problem we're faced with number on, on number five.
So we didn't have enough money to build four, to build J R E. We came in eight million, seven million, whatever it's going to turn out to be over budget. But the school's on the ground, so where did that money come from?
So we had, um, middle school two planning and design in there. We had to, uh, put that one off to move that money into elementaries. And then we basically moved some of elementary five into elementary four to get that done, which left five being even shorter than what it was with the increased inflation.
So in this proposal, how are we covering that plus covering and making sure for number six or make sure we have enough for five? I mean, in this whole.
The, we have, we have the fifteen million for five in here plus the escalation for six.
It's not on that slide. It's on, can you go back to that first slide?
So the fifteen is in there.
Okay.
Yep. It's figured into that.
So that does five, so then what happens with six? Do we think that we're on board with the number we have in here for six?
Based on Marty's escalations, yes.
We took your current, your current bid dollars, um, vetted those through, uh, your construction manager and then we used the escalation that we've been discussing to, to carry it out to the potential bid date. And so, you know, our hope is that that is a little bit conservative. You know, we want to be not too conservative, but the right amount of Goldilocks, you know, zone here. So, uh, you know, that I would be really concerned about reducing that escalation, you know, um, because of the things around, I, I'm not suggesting you are, but it's been brought up tonight, uh, just based on tariffs and other things that we're seeing.
Yeah.
It, it's, there's quite a bit of risk, I, in my opinion, associated with that and I would, especially in light of your current situation, I, I wouldn't recommend it.
Okay, so that fifteen million dollars that we put in here takes care of elementary five. Okay, that was, we would have enough money. And then what happened to the middle school two design money that we borrowed to build Russman?
It's in this middle school two.
It's in this middle school two.
Right here.
All of those two.
It's all, it's the, in that number.
Yes.
Okay, I just wanted everybody to be clear about how we're kind of making that up and trying to get even again, if you will. Okay?
I mean, there are a number of your peers who had to, to, to take away entire projects just to fund their bond shortages. You know, where they've not been able to do a complete project yet, you know, so it could be worse.
I mean, I like to tell, I, 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 I hear issues about trust and can you trust the, the public school do this or that? I mean, and I, and I defend this district on how it's, um, spent its bond money. And I said, we basically have done what, uh, we've promised the community we would do. In this, in, in fairness, in this particular instance, as it relates to middle school design money too, we're not really going to be able to do that with the twenty-two bond.
That's correct.
Because we went over on J R E.
Correct.
Correct.
Right.
And this is the one.
We, we didn't go over, there were inflationary situations.
Inflationary situation drove us over. I don't need that clip. District did. Played all over the place. Thank you for clarifying that.
Yes.
And we're not alone in that.
And it was a domino effect.
Yeah, we're not alone in that because many other districts are in the same boat. But you're right, and that's why we're putting that in here. Okay?
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Everyone good?
We still have Mr. Fight online. Do you have a question?
Yeah, Randy, you know, obviously being a part of the twenty-four bond, does this get us out in front of it where we're not reactive? Because again, I think we heard it today in public comments, I've felt it since the twenty-two bond, that our guy ISD is always reactive to pinch points, overcapacity at Hilltop, overcapacity at West, overcapacity at J R E. Does this move us forward past those challenges?
Did you hear that, Randy? Uh, I believe so. So, I mean, to the best of our ability, I believe it does. Uh, because again, when we looked at the needs, uh, and it was evident that, you know, middle school three and, and potentially of, of future high school three are on the horizon. Uh, we tried to, to, uh, you know, make sure that there was funding available in this bond to address both of those needs, right? So, and that's, that's another big reason why, uh, we felt like designing middle school three now makes a lot of sense. We, we get that done, uh, we get that completed and get through that whole permitting process, which just takes a long time. And that way we can hit the ground running as soon as, you know, that next bond window hits. So, yeah, I, I, to answer your question, I, I believe it does.
Okay.
And I think to further that, you know, with demographer numbers today as they are right now, that middle school three is needed in thirty-four, thirty-five. So the building of itself's not in this bond, but the plan designing, so you back that up, like Mr. Fight said, and we, he talked about this in, in the committee, you're backing that up to the twenty-nine, thirty type school year to try to get that two years' worth of that. So if you look at all the projects that are in this bond package and this proposal from the committee, everything falls within the next five years at some point of needing to start either purchasing land or starting the project because it's a three to four-year process on building anything new. So if you, if, we've gone back and looked at every one of them and it's all falling within twenty-thirty and a couple, I think there was something in twenty-thirty-one, but everything else is within that five-year timeframe.
Am I correct that the only real long-range money in this bond is land? It's not buildings.
Uh-uh, not buildings.
It's really saying, we recognize that, hey, we may have needs outside of twenty-thirty-four and we need to position this district from a land perspective to, uh, be able to meet that need.
And essentially with high school, even earlier than that.
And my, what I have seen, most districts have a ten-year land bank.
Correct. I come from one that did.
We don't.
Correct.
And it's possible maybe somewhere in between. Now in five years, we might have to look at a bond maybe for more land if we either run out of money or things in the district change. You know, I could see some kind of little interim, something. I'm hoping this is enough, plus all those off-site costs. Those are scary because you can't, building roads and things like that. That's, um, so you're looking at a hundred million for that if, if, on the new numbers, right? The off-site costs in the land.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
It's got off-site cost in it.
Okay.
Any other questions?
I know this is long, but if Mr. Warrior would just kind of give us a little bit of information on what the technology is and what happens if the bond wouldn't pass, like what does this look like? What is this infrastructure for and how long does it get us through?
Actually, just pulled this up earlier because there might be a question here. Um, so some of the items that this covers, uh, infrastructure, what you're probably thinking is network switches. That's, that's the big one, you know? We don't do anything without internet. We have to move files, use files, collaborate with files, so nothing is going to work without that. So that is one of the things that we have in there is network switches. We have wireless access points, so, you know, the, that infrastructure is just as important, if not more important now than the switches themselves because everything is wireless. But those costs are effectively duplicated there. You have a large chunk for wireless and you have a large chunk for the switches that power the wireless. Uh, those switches also power security cameras, um, any of the security devices that we have now. Uh, this technology portion includes, um, upgrades for those security items as well, so in- infrastructure that's making the buildings work and safe. Um, it has firewalls. Um, additional phones, P A speakers. So you look at some of our older buildings, they don't have P A systems that function in the way that new ones do. Um, so we have to make those upgrades and, and, uh, make those as good as our, uh, newer campuses as well. We have backup batteries as we grow, uh, we have to make sure all of that stuff can stay up. And then we also have, you know, it's not just the technology themselves, but it's vans. We have to get our technicians to these campuses to service, uh, all of our teacher devices. So it's, it's really long-term, um, devices and needs to operate the technology within this district.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't know who best to, to answer this since we're, we've gone through almost everything on the list, but we'd be remiss if we didn't talk about, uh, our biggest pinch point right now is really middle school in this district. Um, it's growing, i- it's massive. Um, let, let's talk about what are the ramifications if middle, if this bond were to fail and middle school two's not, not completed? What, what are we look, what's the trickle-down effect of that? Because that, that seems, we've got a little bit of room in high school right now with seats. Middle school, that, that's nonexistent, so.
So I think we've talked about this a little bit and Mr., you can jump in wherever, but I think, you know, if we don't have a authori- any authorization for a middle school two separate site, we still have middle school two in twenty-twenty-six staying, that's, that group staying at three seventy-seven. And without an, uh, without an additional off-site middle school two, then it's a rezone. It's still a middle school, high school, um, but it's a rezone for middle school and high school to make, to make the numbers fit. The thirteen hundred, so whatever that looks like, we, we hadn't run anything like that, but it would be a rezone consideration and potentially portables if necessary over there. Um, but it would, it would require a rezone.
Well, I think that, that speaks specifically to that situation, but it's, I'm assuming it's pretty similar with the elementary schools and everything else. If we don't, if we don't get the additional dollars to build elementary five to the original capacity and we don't, we can't start working on elementary six, then we're trying to put kids in any space that we have.
Correct.
And in that scenario, it's, it's potential chaos of, of rezoning.
And portables.
And portables and, and the, the, you know, M and O impact of portables and those. And so it's, uh.
And the considerations that we strive to make in regards to proximity to neighborhoods, to travel time and, yeah.
Staff teaching.
Oh, yeah, hundred percent.
That'll all go out the window.
Yeah. Okay. Does anyone else have anything?
I do. And I, and I think the reason I do is because I want to make sure that people feel heard, okay? And, and, because I, I, I did spend the last seventy-two hours reaching out to people that I know, people that I know that were critical of the last bond. And, and I don't know how they voted, but indications were they probably weren't going to vote for it. And I wanted to get their feedback on what they thought about this bond. And I think, you know, overwhelmingly, people thought this was a better bond. And I think the committee, uh, did a, a good job of, of hitting that, that sweet spot. But inevitably, when you reach out to people and you solicit feedback, and I'm sure y'all all got feedback too, you'll get, I don't like this and I don't like that. I see all the good. I know we need middle school two and finish ES five and build ES six, but they don't like little tidbits around the edges of the bond. And, you know, and I, I don't know if they were saying, hey, I want you to take them out or, you know, really what they, our expectation is, but I, I, I want to tell why I don't, why I don't think we should take them out, anything. Investing in old infrastructure, um, investing in land for future middle schools and high schools. It's because when you look at the charge.
When you go back to the charge, that's what I'm trying to get to, so it's not.
When you look at the charge, I think the committee did exactly what it was supposed to do. Which is you're supposed to put a bond together that considers the needs of all the district students and it represents the priorities, expectations and values of the entire community. And we need to recognize that everybody has different values and different priorities. And if your bond, this ain't my bond, this ain't the board's bond. If I liked everything in the bond, then it may not probably represent the entire community. And for instance, you know, some people don't play baseball and softball. And their kids ain't going to play baseball and softball. But there are people in this district that value that. And we have historically made those investments and should continue to make those investments because if you, if you want to know what made us great, you can, and what we are and what attracted us to, you continue to make those investments. And, and so my, my plea or my words of encouragement are, don't focus on what parts of the bond you don't like. Fol- because that may be someone else's priority. That may be, represent someone else's value. But look at the things that you do like. And recognize that that is representing your priority and that, that is representing your value. I mean, I have voted on bonds. I have questioned the timing of projects or the. I mean, I have voted on bonds, I have questioned the timing of projects or the needs of that project, but I'm glad I voted on them because I'm glad we have them. So I would encourage people, don't, like, just like I encourage my wife, don't look at what you don't like. Focus on what I, what you do like and our marriage will be better. And I think this district will be better.
It's her fault, right?
I know. I think this district will be better. If we look at these bond packages as, hey, I really like middle school two, I like E S six, I like that baseball softball complex. I like the making the investment in land and not just focus on the things that we don't. And so that's kind of my closing remark. And to, to, to let people know, I heard you, I understand there's things you wouldn't put in it, but we're representing more than just you.
I hope you finally got a quote from Mr. Westrom tonight.
There's a couple.
Aaron's going to blow you up.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, I'll, uh, I'll entertain a motion to approve action item seven B.
Make a motion that the board adopt an order calling a bond election to be held on May third, twenty-twenty-five with proposition A in the amount of three-hundred-and-ninety-three million, seven-hundred-and-thirty-five thousand and proposition B in the amount of twenty-nine million, four-hundred-and-thirty-five thousand.
All right, Mr. Hawsworth, a motion to approve, do you have a second?
Second.
Mr. McDowell?
Second.
Yep. All right, Mr. McDowell with a second, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you. And thank you to our committee.
Thank you, Mr. Fite.
Thank you to everyone.
Thank you, committee members.
We appreciate it.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Thank you.
Great, can we stick with action?
Yes.
Okay.
Please, that sounds great.
Awesome.
Ms. Stewart, that's you.
Okay, um, we brought this to you as information on the January meeting and this is for action tonight. It's for the purchase of, um, four regular passenger buses, uh, for use in next year's routing and, um, providing transportation for students to and from school.
Anyone have any questions for Ms. Stewart?
I'm assuming those timelines are still accurate.
The timelines are still accurate. We're still recommending long-horn bus sales, uh, which is again, um, a little bit, uh, more expensive than the, than the least expen-, than the cheapest one on there, but it's due to the timeline, the three-month lead time compared to the eight-to-fourteen month lead time. This actually gets them to us in time for school and we can use in, in planning for next year. And we're anticipating needing additional routes, uh, with the number of students that are increasing.
How much will be left from the twenty-two bond if we authorize these?
So.
Sorry to put you in.
Nope, I actually had it pulled up, I just moved it to the elementary. So in the twenty-two bond, we had four-point-four-nine million set aside for buses. Um, this, before this purchase, we had two-point-four million remaining, just a little over two-point-four. And this would come out of the two-point-four.
All right, I'll entertain a motion to approve action item seven A as presented. Dr. McDade, motion to approve, do I have a second?
Second.
Go ahead and give it to Mr. Westrom, I'm sorry. Mr. Westrom with the second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, Wyvaleen, that was six-zero, Mr. Hawsworth did not vote.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so now we're done with action for the evening. We are going to move up to information only now.
Okay. All right, we've had some, hi Hudson, come on up. How are you? So Mr. Huff's here from Zonda, so, um, he and I are going to kind of tag-team this, but, you know, we, last year, uh, approved the boundaries with the opening of J R E and did that based on, uh, demand for projections. Um, I think everyone in this room and probably listening online realizes that we had higher-than-expected enrollment at Jane Rusman Elementary. Uh, Ms. Tollis has done an incredible job, that staff has done an incredible job adjusting to that, um, over, over the course of the year. But, um, with that, with that, with that, uh, in, extra enrollment and then elementary five not opening until twenty-seven, twenty-eight, um, we're going to have to really consider a boundary, uh, rezone. It's not ever ideal and it's not what we wanted to do, nor did we think we would be sitting here doing this right now, but it is what happened with, um, the enrollment projections. And I know Mr. Huff can talk a little bit about, we've, he's looked in detail how we, how the yield was different and we've talked through that and our fall report reflects the newest yield. So, um, I'm going to let you kind of talk a little bit about that, if you will, um, and then we'll just go from there. Is that okay? Talk about the, yep.
Good evening. Um, again, thank you for the opportunity to, to come and, and discuss this, uh, with you this evening. You know, as we do, um, I think there were a couple of specific things that we were looking at when we, uh, identified our boundaries last year, uh, for recommendation and for approval. Uh, that was to provide relief to both Argyle South and Argyle West. Um, and I do believe we were able to do that. What we, uh, have seen with the adjustments that we made, we, we were fairly conservative with our overall projections for this coming year. Um, that was because we were a little bit short the previous year. And so with that, um, you can see that, that our, our model, uh, that we had adopted and referenced previously and presented last fall, uh, had lower numbers anticipated for this, uh, for this year. Uh, when we updated those numbers and referenced what that model was going to look like, uh, for each of the elementary school campuses, you can see, uh, that are, again, uh, you can see we are still, um, lower than we had, uh, running, kind of in that line of where we had anticipated, a lower enrollment being at West. But we did not anticipate the growth and pace of construction and ultimately the yield that we continue to see, um, in that, in the, in the new elementary, uh, uh, Jay Rusman Elementary, uh, boundary. So, um, again, we've, we were anticipating, uh, a little more conservative projection. We did have quite a few families move in, as we do sometimes have whenever we have a new elementary, um, that's built and, and developed within a community. We do attract a lot of young families, uh, but again, it seemed, uh, that that point-nine yield, uh, has held fairly true. And, uh, with that, we, we've got a larger number here, um, uh, for the next year or two than what we would have, uh, projected initially and what we see happening in the next couple of years. So what we're proposing to try to do is maybe provide, uh, an alternative to try to create that, that balance of relief.
And just to add on to that, just a little bit about the, when we sat down and kind of looked at not only the yield, we also had, um, additional pre-K students because we opened up pre-K, paid, paid pre-K. Uh, we also had reopened, which had been happening since twenty-nineteen, but we reopened the temporary transfer process, which meant families who were purchasing a home in the district that might not have closed on the home in the district yet could go ahead and begin the school year. So that was an add-on in there. And then we've been asked about the, the word, uh, what are our host homes, basically. Um, and so that is when a family lives with a family. And so we have a process of, for that. It's, um, very, very, very detailed and very in-depth. And so we actually, when you have, when you're living with someone else in a host home, it is not just easily to say, I mean, if they can't use the same address or its flag and everything that has the same address is going to come to this building. Dr. Jordan, will you talk just a little bit about what Justine does with host homes and how that, what they have to do to prove, um, to go through that process?
Sure.
Okay.
So they have to have a notarized form that both of the parties have to sign saying that the homeowner and the person living with them, and there is a penalty involved if they not tell the truth on that. We also, they have to have their driver's license switched to their host home's address. And we do send an officer to do a home check where they go into the home, verify that the family is actually living there. And the, the family also understands that a, a home check can be done at any time. And we do do those periodically to just ensure that there hasn't been a change of, um, housing. So if we, um, if anything, if they start arriving tardy a lot and we suspect, suspect there may be something different, if, um, they report that they've moved, of course, that's easy, but, um, so it's, it's not an easy process. They do have to come in and do an in-person appointment here with Justine.
And so Justine shared with me this, this afternoon, we have ninety-nine total students that are enrolled on a host home situation and only six of those are in the J R E zone and eight of those are in the West zone. So most of ours are on, either in the South or Hilltop zone. Um, so it's, that's, there's not very many at all that would have added to that. So I wanted to make that point, that that was not a factor in the over, in the enrollment over.
As it relates to hosts, as long as they fill out the paperwork correctly and you get to verify they're living there and if there's four families in that house, we're going to educate. That we're going to educate, I mean, there's nothing that the district can do and say, hey, look, you know, we don't enforce single-family living.
Correct.
That is correct. We are not allowed to do so.
They're allowed to do so as long as they, we verify the address and they're actually living there. They can have as many.
They're residents, they're considered residents of our district.
Because I've had this question, so the, really if the issue is, is if, if there's too many people living in a house, that's for an H O A or a city to enforce if it's a violation of a code or a regulation. It's not a school district enforcement.
Yeah, because we're required to educate.
Correct.
I would tell you though, that I'm not aware of that type of circumstance happening with our host homes. That there's two families sometimes living together, but I don't know of a situation right now where there's many families all sharing the same household.
And we have some that are just multi-generational, but that doesn't mean they're multi-families.
Yeah, and I have to sign off on every single one and review the documents and I don't know of that happening of many families living together.
I believe it, I just hear it.
And our, and our Skyward system flags any duplicate addresses.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, so I'll let you talk about the revised.
So, and I would also say, whenever we did establish the, uh, the elementary boundary initially last year, it was, uh, in that northwestern quadrant of the district. So it certainly was not, uh, what I would consider very creative. It was certainly, uh, within the, the box of where the elementary campus is going to be located and, and served, uh, the adjacent community. What we've seen, uh, with the numbers that we have within, um, with, within the ridge that we currently have right now, that we really, we need to kind of fine-tune that, uh, to, uh, potentially move that boundary that is just south of Old Justin and, uh, the boundary that is, uh, east of thirty-five, uh, east of thirty-five into Hilltop and, uh, just south of Old Justin to move that down into West. Uh, and so we feel like if we make those adjustments, the, the planning model allows us, uh, to get through the next few years, until we have the, uh, the, the new elementary that would potentially, potentially come online in that, uh, two-thousand-twenty-seven timeframe. Um, again, uh, uh, we, we reach a point in time where we think we're going to be right at that, uh, seven-fifty to seven-seventy range for the next couple of years at Hilltop. It will drop, um, Rusman down a little bit and, and stay within the, the capacity that it currently has. Uh, West, it does push it towards the limits. But again, I think the district will have some degree of flexibility with, with the managing of, of pre-K programs and, and some, some choice, uh, decisions, um, between those two campuses to kind of, uh, manage that, that enrollment at those two campuses the next couple of years. So again, the end goal is ultimately to try to create a balance. You'll see that, that the challenge will be as we get to twenty-six, twenty-seven, uh, that we do start to reach that exceeding capacity at just about all the campuses, but again, that also presses to the, to the point of why we are discussing that next elementary school campus.
Well, the, the, the thing that jumps out on me is that the rezoning takes two schools that are going, operating over capacity and reduces it to one, the only one being Hilltop, right?
Yes.
And it's just a better use of available capacity.
Correct.
Did the, have, has the campus principal seen this?
Yes. Met with, we've met with Ms. Tollis and Ms. Funderburke.
We're fine with that.
Mm-hmm. And understood it. We also talked about the Old Justin. Um, we also had a, you know, it's, obviously with all the traffic patterns and everything that have gone over, gone on over at Jane Rusman this year, uh, the district and the campus administration has worked very collaboratively with Belmont. And we, um, also had con-, some conversation with, not necessarily their whole board, but a singular person that represents, you know, that, that is in that group, talking about Old Justin because of the not having two different main roads for students to cross to get over to Rusman from Cleveland Gibbs and Old Justin. So that made more sense to them as well, um, to that person in talking through that. And so I think that's, it's a good point. They live that, they're, they're part of that, that, um, that board that, you know, sees a lot of the things over there and has been part of the traffic flow recommendations and everything. So that, that matches what that person, uh, shared as well.
So this is just basically an Old Justin boundary?
Mm-hmm.
And by doing that, you're eliminating major road crossings. You're major, eliminating one major road crossing.
Correct.
At J R E.
Correct.
That would allow them to focus their attention and resources.
Resources, mm-hmm.
On the crossing of Cleveland Gibbs only.
Right.
Okay. That makes sense.
This is probably a bit irrelevant, but out of the C Taylor neighborhood, how many, did any of those students go to Jane Rusman?
Only the ones that moved in after we zoned.
Okay.
So.
So everyone stayed at Hilltop.
There might have been two families, I believe. So yes, every, they, most of them were already at Hilltop and their grandfather. And so I think there were two families, I'm aware of, maybe three, that moved in after, that were going to Rusman.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. So then, talking through that, then we, you know, we obviously had a grandfather zone, um, last year and it was that area directly across from West. And kind of that little cut-out piece there, you can see the little shaded, uh, the lines there. So we talked through expanding that to the Sixteenth Street, the houses that face them and that, those two houses on, or three houses right there on Sunflower that were on that corner. So we actually put the, the house numbers down that have students currently living in them. Um, so the ones that are already grandfathered, that are going to West right now, that, that won't change, they're still there. But we would go ahead and allow these Sixteenth Street addresses that are across the street from them and those, that corner on Sunflower to also grandfather. So that's a total of eighteen additional students if they so choose to go. Um, but that would be the little grandfather piece. And then that C Taylor grandfather is no longer in existence because they're going back to Hilltop.
Yeah, I'm glad to see that. That, that Sixteenth Street split kind of made me cringe.
And, and really in reality, last year when we did that, it was because we were trying to not add additional sections of teachers. But ultimately, we ended up adding sections of teachers anyway. So now that we know that and, uh, we recognize that that makes more sen-, that's, that makes most sense for them to also have that option to go right there with the people across the street from them. So that would be a ti-, potentially total of eighteen additional. And just for people that like to see a little visual, that's a zoom in. So all the green is what was already grandfathered. And then the houses on the pink right there on Sixteenth and that corner of Sunflower would also have that opportunity under this recommendation. Uh, the other thing that's new since the last zone is F D B local and the board adopted that back in the fall when we did the zoning for middle school and high school. And that, um, because last year we didn't have anything in place and policy for incoming fifth graders to be able to stay if they want to and the siblings. So if, if there are students that are south of Old Justin that want to remain, entering fifth grade, that want to remain at Rusman, they can exercise their right through the F D B local, um, to stay their fifth grade year. And then the sibling, if they wanted to go with them for that one year only, they could. Um, otherwise, they can all go to West where they're, where they're being rezoned back to. But that is an option if an incoming fifth grader would like to finish his or her elementary career at Rusman. They would be able to do that if they had been rezoned back to West. And so that'll be an option, uh, made available that we did not have before. So our next steps would be tomorrow, um, we will send out a notification to the families in the, it's the J R E families that are going to get the notification because that's the zone that's being changed. Um, we will bring this back to you Monday at the regular board meeting for you to consider. Obviously, time is of the essence because we are in the middle of staffing and budgeting and those kinds of things. Plus, parents need to be able to know where their students are going. We need to, we've got to be able to take, um, the grandfather, we're going to be able to talk through the fifth grade option if they want to stay. And then obviously, start talking to staff, who's going to go and who wants to transfer and so forth, because we will be moving teachers again. Um, but we will bring that back to you to consider on Monday. And then upon board approval, then we would kind of start our process. So the very next day, we email the, the, all the J R E families with the final decision. Um, no later than the end of next week, we'd be sending out the, for those that are eligible to grandfather or to trans-, to transfer, um, would be, would get their notification. And then a transfer process will also be sent out to staff. So that way, teachers can start, which is a normal process anyway every year, but this will be even more important because we've got to move some around based on this zoning addition. And then we'll need to have our staffing allocations really finished in March, um, at, no later than the first part of April. So it's, it's pretty timely. So it's, it's pretty timely, um, to work through this in a, in a, and there's not a, a huge change, but enough that we need to move along with it pretty quickly.
Okay. That's true.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
All right, the time is 6:10 PM and we are adjourned.